I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to our six o'clock regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the invocation and the pledge. The invocation will be led by Commissioner Brunson and the pledge by Commissioner Neal.
Father Lord God, we come tonight and we thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your love for us. Lord, we thank you for the glorious weather you've given us these past couple of days. And Father, we thank you always for the great opportunity you've given us to live in this wonderful place, to be able to live, work, and serve in the Golden Isles. Father, we lift up prayers for all those families tonight that have been affected by this terrible pandemic. We ask your blessing on them. Father, give us wisdom, give us discernment tonight as we deal with the issues before us involving our citizens and our county government. And Father, may everything we do bring honor and glory to you, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seats. Next item on the agenda is public comment period, and the first speaker will be Ms. Margaret Herman. Ms. Herman, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Margaret Herman. Thanks for putting up the PowerPoint. So I'm here to talk about the pickleball court project for King Park. And I would like to remind you that mature trees and green space are amenities. I'm also speaking on behalf of almost 2,000 people who oppose the pickleball court construction project. Next slide is wildlife is also an amenity. And in King Park, we have many birds such as the red-tailed hawk, the great horned owls, and the American red starks. And the next slide. I implore you to use taxpayer funds wisely and to preserve property values. This project costs taxpayers more than 140,000 plus budgeted for the project. We also have not seen the bill for cutting down the four large mature trees. Glen County currently provides 12 courts for pickleball. As you can see, they are located in these three locations. Not to mention numerous courts in private communities that people who live there have the privilege to play at. If we must have dedicated pickleball courts, a neighborhood location, a neighborhood park is a bad location. Pickleball is not like tennis. Pickleball is loud. A quick Google search will lead you to countless communities all across the United States contending with this problem. Please build courts in a remote area. Please build courts with sound fencing. Please build courts where parking is plentiful. The proposed King Pick Park pickleball project does not include any funds for fencing, screening, or parking. This is a huge mistake which will come back to bite you. Lastly, I have warning that other communities who have gone before us with this have had to pay big bills to remediate the sound. This is one example of Punta Gorda in Florida having to pay $35,000 for fencing after years of fighting and problems in the community. So lastly, please listen to your constituents. Nearly 2,000 people object to this project. This is not a neighborhood issue. This is an island issue. There are many other smarter alternatives that have been given to you as the commission. Please do something other than take down the trees, disrupt the wildlife, disrupt the quiet, impact property values. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Next speaker is Julian Smith. If you'll step up to the podium and state your name for the record, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get this started. I'm Putty Smith. I live on St. Simon's Island. I'm here to comment on two matters before you tonight. First, although I support the implementation of impact fees, especially for St. Simon's Island, this impact fee methodology report in your packet tonight strikes me as a recipe for disaster. Your staff recommends that you accept this report and authorize the consultants to continue developing it. I recommend that you do not do so. I also suggest that you schedule a public hearing on this report so that the consultants and you can hear from the public about some of the problems in this report. It's only a little less than 200 pages long, so public should have no trouble reading it. What is wrong with this report? Among other things, it provides using impact fees to help fund animal shelters, which I have nothing against. But it does not provide any funding for humans on the mainland and the islands during hurricanes and floods when we're going to have more people who have to evacuate quickly. This report says nothing about reducing present and future traffic demands. Instead, it relies on the assumptions and parameters found in a 1958, I'm sorry, 1985 highway capacity manual that defines levels of service in terms of such words as freedom, comfort, desired speed, and frustration. Consider the population forecast on page 20. According to this forecast, between now and 2050, there will be an increase of more than 6,000 housing units on St. Simon's, an increase of nearly 8,000 in population on St. Simon's, and a total increase of 10,886 residents and service providers on St. Simon's, and this doesn't count tourists and day trippers. Consider the assumptions on page 109 regarding accommodating future traffic. Quote, regardless of the design of roads in the system, the system must address the future traffic demands that will be created by new growth and development, unquote. Commissioners, I suggest you should not and must not plan to accommodate the huge increases in housing stock, in population, and traffic. You can and should plan to prevent those increases. That's good planning. Moving on to the proposal to adopt an ordinance to ban the possession and consumption of alcohol on Frat Beach next month. Commissioners, you seem to be preparing to rearrange the deck chairs on the Titanic as it approaches an iceberg named COVID-19. What qualifies me to speak on this matter? I spent 40 years as a college professor, the last 25 at the University of Florida, a notorious party school. After I retired, I spent more than 10 years as an elected official in another college town that was home to another party school. If I had more time, I would share some of the hard lessons I learned about what happens when the police and drunken college, drunken party animals clash. If the governor of Georgia refuses to wake up and smell the corpses, if he says you cannot close our public beaches on St. Simon's because of the pandemic, then please ask yourself this simple question. Why should you put county staff, county police, sheriff's deputies, state police, game wardens, and the public in danger of contracting a deadly virus while trying to confiscate beer and booze? So what do I recommend you do about this proposed ordinance? Forget about it. And send letters to the presidents of the universities of Florida and Georgia asking them to recommend their students stay away from St. Simon's this year. Let the newspapers in those college towns know that Glen County cannot guarantee the health or safety of any students who party on our beaches. Let them know we don't have the manpower or resources to enforce social distancing requirements. Let them know the parking lots will be locked, that there will be no porta potties, no lifeguards. In short, it does not make sense to plan for Frat Beach when it is possible the Georgia-Florida game may be canceled. When it is possible, we will be hit with a hurricane. When it's possible, there may be unrest because of what happens on Election Day earlier that week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on our agenda tonight is commission presentations and announcements. And item one, present a proclamation designating the week of October 4 through October 10, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week. I have a proclamation here I'm going to read, and Chief Jordan, you got your...
Yes, sir. I had my apparently reluctant staff. The gentlemen with me are, represent, and are the Fire Prevention Bureau for the county of Glen.
Okay. Would you like to introduce them?
Absolutely.
By name, so we know who we have here tonight?
Absolutely. The gentleman to my immediate right is Fire Inspector Ray Sean Mack, Fire Inspector Edward Keefe, and Fire Marshal and Division Chief Wendell Knighton.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and welcome to the meeting tonight. And we certainly appreciate everything y'all do to keep our community safe. And a lot of that means you have to put your life in harm's way, and we can never say enough thanks for doing that. So I will say thank you again. And now I'm going to read this proclamation. Recognizing Fire Prevention Week, whereas Glen County, Georgia is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Glen County, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern in homes or where people are at the greatest risk to fire, and whereas the citizens, visitors, and guests of the county will be educated about the need to be ever vigilant in their environment to the dangers of fire and the ways to prevent fire from occurring, and whereas Glen County Fire Rescue will review plans, inspect premises, and make recommendations to enhance fire safety for building occupants, and whereas the Glen County Fire Rescue Department will advocate, assist, review, revise, and promulgate laws, rules, regulations, and codes that will strengthen and lead to a more fire-safe environment, and whereas the department will apply fire codes and standards through education, engineering, and enforcement with consistency and fairness in the pursuit of increasing life safety and reducing fires, and whereas Glen County firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire deaths and injuries through prevention and education, and whereas Glen County residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal responsibility to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of the fire service in Glen County, and therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Glen that the week of October 4 through October 10, 2020, is proclaimed Fire Prevention Week. Excuse me. In witness whereof, I set my hand this first day of October 2020, Michael Browning, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Congratulations, gentlemen, and thank you. Okay, the next, we had the second proclamation to read. And apparently we don't have anyone here to accept it, but they did want it read tonight. And it's for Pink Out Friday. Proclamation designation Friday, October 9, 2020, as Pink Out Friday. Whereas nationally, over 246,000 women and men are diagnosed with breast cancer each year, and in 2020, breast cancer continues to be a common cause of cancer in the southeast Georgia region. And whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month with the aim of increasing awareness of the disease and facilitating research into its causes, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. And whereas the health and well-being of our community are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness and education regarding breast cancer and from encouraging our citizens to take actions to lower their risk of developing the disease. And whereas we are joining southeast Georgia Health System, the Susan G. Komen Coastal Georgia affiliate, the American Cancer Society, and communities across southeast Georgia in proclaiming Friday, October 9, 2020, as Pink Out Friday. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that it hereby designates Friday, October 9, 2020, as Pink Out Friday and by encouraging our citizens to wear pink on this day to increase awareness of this disease, to show support and recognition of our neighbors, family, and friends who have been impacted by breast cancer and to take an active role in helping to make breast cancer a part of our past and not our community's future. In witness whereof, I set my hand this first day of October 2020, Michael Browning, Chairman, Glen County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to take the opportunity, this is a very serious disease, and I've experienced it in my home with my mother and my wife, and I'm sure others have. I'd like to know if we have any, any audience with us tonight that have, you know, if you don't mind, you know, sharing with us. Some people do, but if you don't mind. You know, let us see your hands if you've had experience with it, because it affects a lot of people. Thank you. It affects a lot of people depending on when you, if you get the disease, when you know you have it, if you take treatments, when you first start taking treatments, kind of treatments. It can be very harsh on a person. If you go through chemo and surgeries and radiation, and a lot of those treatments can change, they can save the person, but they can change the person too. They can end up with an immune system that's not like it once was. So then they have life issues till hopefully they can live to be old people. But, you know, they still have things they're dealing with. So this is a very serious thing, and I'm glad we can be a part of proclaiming this week as Pink Out Week. And I hope everybody join in and support the effort to eradicate this terrible disease from our community and really across the country. So if anybody else has up here got anything to say about it, Commissioner?
Chairman, I'd like to have a moment here, if you will. As many of you remember, just a few short years ago, we lost one of our beloved... As many of you remember, just a few short years ago, we lost one of our beloved administrators in Cindy Overstreet, our county clerk, to this dreaded disease. And at this time, I'd like for everybody to stand up for her and let's have a moment of silence for Cindy, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay.
I might make a word or two. So I first started my career in medicine back in the early 70s and I've got to say that through research and hard work and only through tremendous amount of donations and government funding has the research been able to be executed. The treatment, the diagnosis and the treatment of breast cancer is nothing short of miraculous. We still have a long way to go, but the early diagnosis remains a critical aspect to it. And through these types of efforts and continued donations and research, hopefully everyone who is afflicted with this will get the early diagnosis and be able to sustain early treatment, which is often curative above the 90% success rate level, which was unheard of back in the late 70s and 80s. In fact, when talking about impacting family lives, my wife's mom died just past the age of 50 from a very aggressive form of breast cancer. My wife, my mother developed it later in age and was able to defeat it, but you know, there's a lot of other types of cancers that we still need to figure out, but this one has really, really been radically changed and continued research and early detection, I think, will even make greater strides. So thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearing, item four.
Item three.
Pardon me?
Item three.
Item three.
Yeah. Ms. Chairman, I would move that we defer item number three and item number five.
Okay, we have a motion to defer item three and five?
Yes.
Okay, and a second. Commissioners, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that is unanimous. We had deferred items three and items five. Still under public hearing, item four. Received citizen comments regarding the proposed fee for online pet adoption from Glenn County Animal Control and consider implementing said fees. Ms. Tiffany Hill, our Animal Control Director?
Good evening. For your consideration this evening, I wanted to give a brief presentation about a resource that we've been using in test mode for the past couple of months and have been very happy with. It is called AddoPets.com and it is an adoption management software application and we were able to get access to it because we're members of the Best Friends Partner Network and they gave free lifetime accounts to all of the shelters who are part of that network. It does receive automatic updates going both directions from our shelter database and it is being promoted primarily because it responds to the concerns around COVID-19 and social distancing and doing as much as possible online, including in animal shelters. It mimics an online shopping experience, so it's very user-friendly and it also encourages optional additional donations of money. And we actually do have adopters who have donations waiting for approval to enable all of the services that it provides so that we can transfer that into our account. But it allows them to give donations of an additional 10 to as much as $100 if they'd like to on top of their adoption fee in order to support the continued work of Animal Control. Now this does add a $5 user fee to the adoption fee for those who choose to pay with credit or debit cards online through the application. However, the adopter can pay by cash check, credit or debit card with no user fee if they choose to pay at the shelter instead of paying using the application. So if a potential adopter goes to our website, this is the first page that they come to to access the listings of our adoptable pets. And previous to us enabling adoptive pets, this is what the interface looked like. And then of course, all of the adoption process from the application through payment was handled by paper and in person. Now with AddoPets, this is what opens and as you can see, it's colorful, it's large and very easy to use. And then for us on the backend, also again, as I said, it interfaces with our current database and it makes the application process can be completely virtual and very organized for those of us on staff. And then as I mentioned, it also encourages additional donations to the work of Animal Control by encouraging adopters to add additional money to their adoption fee. The potential challenges fortunately are not too great with this. As I mentioned, if there is an adopter who does not want to pay the additional $5 user fee to pay online through the application, then they can just wait and pay the fee when they pick up their dog or cat from our shelter. There is the potential for data breaches. That is common to online shopping applications that all of us use these days and this is not, this one does not have a greater chance of having a data breach than any of the other ones. And also I know that our attorney's office would like to do some negotiation with AddoPets on the confidentiality and liability provisions in the term of use. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, y'all have any questions? Tiffany?
Mr. Chairman, I just like to say, I mean, this is, you know, what I mentioned yesterday, the ingenuity you've been putting into the shelter out there and the new issues that we're facing and money raising situations. And I just think this sounds, sounds really, really good to me. I mean, I think $5 is not asking too much for, to implement something like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any questions or discussion before we open up the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the floor. I'm going to open it up to the public hearing. Anyone have any comments about the fee? If they'll step up to the podium and state your name for the record? And this is no sides, is pro, con, whatever, you know? Okay, I'm going to ask again if anybody wants to come up and speak for, against, or whatever about the fees. If not, we're going to close the public hearing. All right, I closed the public hearing. Mr. Attorney, that's all we're doing with this item, right? We're not taking a vote on it? Or are we? Are we taking a vote on this?
Ms. Patel says we're.
Okay. Okay. All right.
You're actually vote on implementing the fees now, now that you've had the presentation on that?
Okay. All right, we've had the public hearing, gentlemen. I was a little off on that, but if you will, anybody wants to consider making a motion to accept these, to implement these fees?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize Animal Control Department to implement the adoptive pet agreement with associated user fee as presented with an effective date of today, October 1st.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, I call the motion. All those in favor signify by aye. That is unanimous. Thank you, commissioners. Item six on the public hearing, land use, ZM 4399. The Oaks Consider a Request to Rezone from R6, One Family Residential to Local Commercial for Property Known as a Portion of Abandoned First Avenue, the Western 20 Feet of 3509 Frederica Road, St. Simons Island. The applicant is proposing a commercial use parcel ID 04-04952 Jonathan Roberts, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent for C Marshes Development, applicant and GHJ LLC owner. Jonathan or Steffi?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 4399, the Oaks Rezone, and this is a 20-foot portion of property that is currently zoned R6. It's the western portion of the parcel that fronts Frederica on St. Simons and it's about, it's half of the abandoned First Avenue. So currently it is zoned R6. It is adjacent to a local commercial property that the applicant owns and they would like to do a commercial use and have a little more land to expand their commercial use. And the Comprehensive Future Land Use Map, it is compatible, it is neighborhood commercial. This is the property here. This is Frederica, heading north on St. Simons. Across the street, this is the shopping area where Brogan's North is. This is the local commercial property here. This is that kind of light purple color, this khaki color where the star is located in the middle. This is a portion of the parcel that is still zoned R6 and it is half of abandoned First Avenue. And just kind of zoomed in version of where you can see the R6 right here and then this is the local commercial. It is between Atlantic and Palmetto, the cross streets. So this application did go to the Islands Planning Commission on August 18th of 2020. There are a couple of changes since the IPC did consider this. When the IPC considered the application, there were two additional R6 zone parcels as well as the remainder of abandoned First Avenue. So it was basically a 40-foot strip, entirety of abandoned First Avenue as well as two additional parcels. The IPC did recommend to the Board of Commissioners denial of that particular application. There are a lot of comments from citizens and residents of the Glen Haven area, a lot of concerns about the expansion of commercial deeper into the residential neighborhood and many of the IPC members shared those concerns. Given the comments that were expressed by IPC members and the public at the, at the meeting, the applicant did send us a letter after the IPC considered this matter and said that they wanted to withdraw two of the parcels and 20 feet of First Avenue from the application and they really just wanted to really reduce it down to just this 20-foot strip adjacent to the local commercial area. So that is what you have before you at this time. So just to clarify, which was something we, you know, we had to, we looked into when, when we were looking at all of this and researching kind of exactly where the zoning boundary lines were. So these are the, the old MyLars from the original zoning. And so the way that, that the zoning was separated prior to abandoning First Avenue, the, the local commercial and R6 boundary line was at a property line on the eastern side of First Avenue. So if you can see where this blue, blue box is located, this red tape represents the zoning boundary lines. And so this area right here is local commercial and then everything to the west of this red tape is R6. And right here is abandoned First Avenue, or it was First Avenue at that time, but abandoned now. And so this just, this just shows the historic lot lines. And so this is the original request presented to the IPC on August 18th. So this shows the additional parcels as well as all of First Avenue that was included in the August 18th proposal. And then this is the same area just showing exactly what they're requesting tonight. So this yellow boundary is just the 20 feet, 20 feet of First Avenue. Everything to the left of here is no longer part of the proposal. This is their sketch plan. They are, they have had several iterations of a site plan. They will go to the IPC in the future for site plan approval if this rezone is approved. So this is what they're planning to do. This is the commercial use and parking on the LC zone property. This red boundary line is abandoned First Avenue. And where you see the yellow, this is the area they're asking to rezone. They are planning to have an accessway through, you know, through all of First Avenue, which would be divided as R6 and LC, you know, if this application's approved. They are planning to have this access road, provide driveways to the residential property, which is also owned by the applicant as well. And then they will have parking spaces for the commercial use on the, on the LC zone property. So this is subject to potentially change. You do not have to have a complete site plan as part of this application. The requirements are just a sketch plan for a conventional reason. As I mentioned, the comprehensive plan is compliant. The August 18th meeting, IPC did vote four to three denial, but that was based on the full additional two parcels and the additional land. So this is a reduced application, as I mentioned. And these are your possible actions tonight. You can approve it as presented to you this evening, approve with conditions or modifications, continue the hearing to a later date, remand the application back to the Islands Planning Commission or deny the zoning decision. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Jonathan Roberts is here tonight representing the applicant.
Thank you, Steffi. Commissioners, y'all have any questions? Steffi?
I have a couple. One would be procedural. Is it unusual to have something denied by the IPC and then come to the Board of Commissioners without circling back to the IPC first? Is this procedurally correct for us to do it this way?
It is procedurally correct. We do have a section in the zoning code that does say if there is a change to the application or significant change, it should go back to the, or back to Planning Commission before coming to the BOC. Our, our interpretation of that is that if it's significantly changed, for example, you know, today at the IPC, they're requesting local commercial and then before they came to the BOC, they changed it to requesting highway commercial. Those are very significant changes that we would not bring to you before going back to the Planning Commission. In this case, they reduced the application, so it's, it's a lesser, really a lesser impact, a lesser application than what was originally done. So we felt that it was still fine to bring to you tonight. Of course, you know, as one of your options, you do have the option to remand it back if you feel differently.
Right, I just said, it is, it does seem to be more, I was there at the IPC meeting and this is quite a bit more simplified. So to go back, abandoned First Avenue was 40 feet wide. They want to take 20 feet of it, make it commercial, but they're going to access from the, from the residential side to reach their parking places that are commercial, correct?
Their current, and this would be subject to site plan approval, so this, this exact plan may not, you know, may not, you know, could or could not be approved by the IPC. But that is what they're looking at right now is they would be accessing, yeah, through a parcel that would be split zoned, R6.
So I guess my question would be similar. Is, is that legitimate to, to use residential property to be the ingress and egress point for commercially zoned land? I mean, what's, what's your reaction to that?
I mean, our, our feeling would be it cannot be, it cannot be a commercial use. So if they, if they were showing parking or only commercial access on the R6 zone portion, our interpretation would be that, that would not be allowed, but because it is a shared access, you know, you do have drive, you do have private access and public access, you, you variety of access driveways and easements, you know, around the county that are shared between residential and commercial. So I would say that, that is something that we have, we do see around the county. So I don't think it's, it's clear that that's, that's prohibited, but I, but that definitely is something that the IPC will look at.
But if we do give approval to this minor change, that might be something that the IPC tries to digest when they look at the site plan, correct?
Correct.
And we, they wouldn't necessarily say, well, the Board of Commissioners approved this, therefore we can use that as the, as the ingress and egress to our commercial parking.
That is correct. I think that is.
They could deny that. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's good to make, to make that clear. I mean, all, all you are doing this evening, if you do approve this, is that this strip of 20 feet can be used for the commercial uses outlined in local commercial, nothing specific to what, to what kind of a, a plan or layout that is under site plan review.
Thank you.
And Stephanie, when, when this...
And Stephanie, when this was originally abandoned, First Avenue, and that 40-foot right-of-way, it was all 40-foot R6, correct? But the tax parcel has 20 foot of it as R6 with the remaining parcel as commercial, right? So on one single tax parcel, we have two separate zones. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
So this would, this would simply remove that 20-foot of R6 in a commercial parcel and make that whole parcel commercial?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good clarification. Commissioners, y'all have any, any more questions or discussion before we move to the public Okay, Staffy, thank you. We're going to go to the public hearing, and I'm going to open the floor to anyone opposed to the application. Step up to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
George Ragsdale. Long time since Commissioner Murphy and I have been on the same page. I'd like to take issue with the answer that Ms. Leaf gave. The ordinance is quite clear in Section 1102.4D that any change made after a denial by the IPC is supposed to come back to the IPC. It should not even be on your agenda tonight. There is no qualifier for that change being significant or material or anything else. The ordinance says any change. And as the applicant's letter on August 31st indicated, they have modified their request. The staff report in several places says that they have modified their request. At the end of the day, it's not a question of whether I or other IPC members feel like the modified request is something we would approve or deny. It's supposed to come back to us. It's not supposed to be in front of you.
I'm Julian Smith again, and I'm speaking in opposition. I spoke in detail about this application at the IPC meeting last month, or was it the month before? And one of the points I made is, do we really need more empty commercial space on St. Simons or in this particular area? This is not a situation where somebody who has a famous restaurant or a good restaurant on the mainland wants to have one here. It is empty commercial space. And if you don't mind, let me step away and let someone else speak so I can have a sip of water. My throat is catching on me. So I'm sorry about that.
My name is Hugh Bork. I'm a resident of St. Simons, and I also own a piece of property about three or four doors down from the backside on Palmetto Street as investment property. So I have a little bit of interest in property value around what's going on with this piece. Fortunately, I was out of town when this went to the IPC, but I did convey to a number of folks of my opposition to the IPC proceedings that took place regardless of the outcome. However, in speaking to this particular application, if you look at the history of First Avenue along from Palmetto to Palm, which is across the street, not part of this discussion, but you follow the corridor or First Avenue on down, and you go back to the Thrive buffers and et cetera, and all the kerfuffle that came up because it was kind of a gee whiz, oh, wow, we got a three-story building looking to somebody's bedroom at Thrive. Granted, it's not part of this, but the history of what I've termed in before you folks in the past as silo decision-making of piecemealing the elements of a project plan and approving it as you go forward is creep in what you folks may well, in all good intentions, approve or may not approve, all right? But you're not looking at the whole picture. So by doing it in segments, such as getting partially this thing back to local commercial, all right, there's some logical conclusions that can be drawn to Commissioner Neal's question, is to get it all in one bucket, okay, for this particular parcel. But if you look at what's going on down here, and commercial development is not controlled well enough to maintain property values. Now, your legal counsel has told you, well, you can't hold a developer accountable for that. You can only hold them accountable for what's on the checklist. Well, gentlemen, that then leaves it to you folks, the approving body, to hold the developer accountable for making sure our property values are not eroded. So you won't do it in the ordinance because of the way you've been given legal advice, which I don't agree with. I got other legal input and whatever, haven't chosen to take it to court, all right? But it's just common sense, gentlemen, just common sense. So too many times, you get tied up in the legalisms. What does, what does the ordinance say? And we just had one challenge to the Planning Department's interpretation of the ordinance, all right? So it's not clear understanding of what that's all about. My suggestion in this case is get the whole plan in front of you before this rezoning takes place, okay? When you got commercial in such a tight area, and I'm sure some of you folks are very familiar with all of the commercial activity in the area, with what Ms. Leaf referred to as a Brogan's North Plaza, you've got two or three restaurants in there, liquor store, a lot of small commercial items. God bless them, they're doing a good job, but there's not sufficient parking there, okay? When you start doing this kind of stuff, particularly when you're talking about access, alternate access, the reason for the alternate access, I suspect, and I'll defer to the engineer on this one, is because it's so tight, getting access to that property is going to be a problem anyway. But access from a private property into a commercial property, regardless of what that property looks like, doesn't pass the ha-ha test for me. Does it look good, feel good, and smell good? This one stinks. It doesn't feel good at all, okay, on rezoning this particular element, all right? So I would recommend, as a minimum, it gets referred back to the island, to the Planning Commission, based on Mr. Ragsdale's comments, all right? And get a better picture of what this whole thing looks like, as opposed to doing the piecemeal. Or we're going to end up with some more, what I'll call, post-BOC actions that's going to be controversial and have some of your constituents more pissed off than they are right now. So I just recommend that you guys defer it, okay, and refer it back to the IPC for proper protocol under the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bork.
I'll sort my clock again and be brief. I agree with what Mr. Ragsdale and Mr. Bork had to say. Yesterday, Ms. Leaf wrote to, had wrote an email to an IPC member telling him that, quote, "We don't feel this is a different application," unquote. Well, this is a different application. And she told you a few minutes ago tonight that our feeling, what our feeling would be. So in an email and to you tonight, she talks about feelings. From county staff, I would very much like to hear thoughts, what they believe, what they know, what they can prove, what they can document, and what passes the smell test. We cannot smell feelings. Suddenly, I feel sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Jeff Kilgore, and I would just like to supplement what has been stated so far, and oftentimes when I'm, almost always when I'm here, I'm asking you to please follow your own ordinances. Once again, we're presented with a situation where you're being asked to ignore your ordinance, and Commissioner Ragsdale made reference to it. I'm sure that y'all have studied it for consideration, this item, but to ensure the record's clear, I want to read this. This is 1104 dot two, little d, in your ordinance. Once submitted and considered by the Planning Commission at a public hearing, an application may not be changed, may not be changed, by an applicant unless the changes are made to address conditions or modifications adopted by the Planning Commission in their recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. There's no discretion there. There's no feelings there. There's no interpretation. It says the application may not be changed. Now, I don't know where you get your legal interpretations, but, and I'm not a lawyer, but I've worked with a bunch of lawyers who would tell you that "may not" is definitive. It's not open to interpretation. I don't know who decides. Commissioner Murphy talked about this may not be as radical an application as it was before, it's simpler. There's no accommodation in your ordinance for simpler. Your ordinance says it goes back to the IPC for consideration. They will make the determination according to your ordinance. If this were to be approved, your ordinance requires a type A buffer for this situation with commercial property adjoining residential. You might ask your Planning Manager, I don't recall specifically, I'm pretty sure it's 20 feet for a type A buffer. And finally, I'm thoroughly amused at Commissioner Murphy's concern about using residential streets for commercial applications. I wish that y'all had had that level of concern when you considered German Village, but it's before you again, and you made the wrong decision then. I certainly hope you make the right decision this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kilgore.
Hi, my name is Sue Cannelli, and I live at 308 Palmetto Street. The families there will be directly impacted by this, and what I wanted to say was what I said at the last meeting, safety. Safety first. As you look at these plans, which I actually have two different plans, so maybe there'll be a third, I don't know. There are supposed to be 42 parking spaces, 42, between Atlantic and Palmetto. The impact of that onto a residential street, and we have lots of kids going up, it's a family neighborhood, that's what Glen Haven is, and the last time I said to them, please protect the kids with safety. Looking at both these plans, you have two ins and two outs onto Palmetto. That's going to impact where the paint store is. You'll have cars backing up. It's going to impact our fire department. They're right across the street from all this. There is no traffic light there. There is a traffic light at Atlantic. To have all that traffic coming in and out of that little tiny space, I'm just warning you, you will have a horrific accident. You'll have things happen that have been already voiced. So safety for kids on the streets, safety for impact and traffic, and also, at the back of this abandoned area is water. There's a stream. There's some type of marshland there. I'm also here to say you may have flooding. If they're going to use that and cap it off with pavement for some of the buildings or some of the parking, that's also going to impact, you know, the land around. Can you guarantee there won't, can you guarantee there won't be flooding? That little street gets flooded a lot. So again, safety to the children that play up and down that street right there, safety for the traffic and that people don't get hurt with two types of driveways coming in and out just on Palmetto. That's too much. That is just too much in this little tiny area. And then you do have the water problem. And I agree with what everyone else said here. Yes, I live there, but it's a great neighborhood. We want to keep it that way. And also, they haven't been above board on exactly what's going to go there. It was rumored there was going to be a restaurant. Is there going to be a restaurant? It's going to be third-party? Who is it going to be? Is it going to be late at night? Again, children on Atlantic, children on Palmetto. It's a huge concern. It's not just a nine-to-five store possibly going in. And again, 42 parking spaces is too much. So I'm not a fan of them taking any of that abandoned land and also paying attention to what they're putting in there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, anyone else? If not, we're going to open the floor up to the, anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application, come up to the podium and state your name. Anyone want to speak in favor of the application? Okay, last call. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing portion. Commissioners, turn it over to you.
Yeah, thanks. Hey, Jonathan Roberts, could you come up and answer some of these questions? I know you're not necessarily, you don't speak in favor of it, although you are the engineer for the project. Tell us about some of the things that have been discussed here tonight, including 42 parking places on that parcel of land? Is that the plan?
Yeah, Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts, Robert Civil Engineering. And as far as the being forthright, the plan is showing exactly what we've proposed. And we've been working on this plan since January. Originally, the Public Works Department did not want traffic close to the intersection at the traffic light. They didn't want a driveway that went through from Palmetto to Atlantic that exited on Atlantic. That's the main reason for the driveway on the backside of the building. Public Works told us very clearly, it's not allowed on the front side of the building. We've been very forthright in the planning and what we're proposing to do. It is designed to have 20 feet of additional commercial property to fill the parcel, as Mr. Neal alluded to, that parcel is a split-zone parcel. And when that property was abandoned, half was given to the front parcel. The zoning didn't go with that, with that give of the extra 20 feet. We will have to work through with the Planning Commission on a site plan that meets the requirements, that takes the considerations from the neighborhood. We've heard the comments from the last comments at the Planning Commission and made significant changes. The building has gotten over 1,000 feet smaller. This owner has been a pretty good steward to Glen County. He's had the property vacant, and he allowed joint water and sewer to stage equipment there for months and months. He's allowed Glen County recently to stage paving equipment on the site. He has the property under contract with a developer from Atlanta, the same developer that did the Market Street development on St. Simons where Solantros and Nancy and those developments are. He has a reputation of doing good quality projects. He did the Sea Island Market and the development of that area. It's under contract. The owner certainly hopes that this goes forward. This 20 feet is kind of a big deal for whether it can go forward. As far as being forthright, that's exactly what we do. We show it on plan and paper. We're not trying to hide anything. That's why we even showed the driveway. The driveway is proposed to be on the residential side, but in the R6 zoning, a driveway can be on a R6 parcel. Shared use agreement, that's allowable, but this owner owns the R6 and the commercial. He owns all of it. So the ask is the 20 feet. I defer to the county attorney of whether that's appropriate for you guys to even vote on. I'm not a lawyer, and that may not be the case. Would certainly like him to weigh in on that, and that if that's not appropriate for you guys to take action, certainly we would appreciate it to go back to the Planning Commission.
Are there any plans as to what will go on that piece of property yet?
Yes, yes. So, and she alluded to a restaurant. In the beginning, this developer had a shell of a building. He didn't know what was going there. So we did say that it might be a restaurant. Again, we want to be forthright. We don't want to try to hide anything. At that time, in January, February, when the plan was made, he didn't know. Now he knows. Harrison Design Architecture and Five Star Credit Union, those are the two tenants. If it goes through in a timely manner, those would be the two tenants. It'd be a one-story building, and we would have the separation from the existing residents. It would be from the edge of the driveway to the edge of the property line, it'd be 54 feet. So that's a pretty nice buffer that would be between those existing residents to the edge of the shared edge of the shared driveway.
So, a credit union and Harrison Designs, and you need 42 parking places?
It's all based on the square footage of the building.
All right, not necessarily the occupants?
That's right.
Okay.
Jonathan, what about, what about the drainage issue that was?
Yeah, drainage is certainly going to be a huge part of the construction plan design. Right now, we've got it planned for underground detention, so we would not release any more water after the development than it's releasing right now, because that is certainly a critical item that we'll study very carefully and make sure that the calculations show that it's going to be, it's going to meet the requirements of the county so that it doesn't flood any of the neighbors.
Jonathan, type A buffer, that is a 20-foot buffer, is that right?
Can be 20 feet or 12, or reduced if allowed by the Planning Commission, so that would certainly be something that will come up at the IPC.
And, Mr. Attorney, can you address Mr. Raxdale's?
I can, Commissioners, and in fact, this may be more of a question to Mr. Roberts or Ms. Leaf. Has the applicant or is the applicant changing their application?
We did not change the application, we submitted a letter removing a portion of parcels from the application.
So, I mean, is the application the same as it was presented to the Planning Commission, and the board is free to modify it as presented originally, or is the applicant changing the application? I think that's a key distinction. If the applicant is changing the application, I mean, if we can go to the proposed motion, I guess the alternatives and the options by the board.
So, as Mr. Roberts stated, the application itself did not change, the signed application that is submitted, that's a requirement for dismissal, that stayed the same. They did submit a letter, though, saying that they were voluntarily removing parcels from their request. So, I mean, the way that I looked at it is, I mean, I think the board is free to review the original application. I don't think that's necessarily what the applicants are asking for now, however, a few weeks back they were. So, that, I mean, I guess that's the way I would put it. I mean, they could review the application that was put before the IPC.
And if I understand correctly, and I want to make sure I understand, that the application, you would acquiesce to a change, but you're not necessarily saying your application has changed. You would consent to that if the board made that modification, but your application is still the same, you're as willing to acquiesce to a change or modification if that was what the board wanted to see?
That's right, that's exactly right.
Got it. So, Commissioners, the application before you is still the same application before the Planning Commission?
Our consent agenda changes were made.
Well, they're removing...
Look at this letter about Thursday, first. It says we'd like to amend the application.
Commissioners, if the applicant is amending the application, if the applicant is saying we've amended it, then yes, it needs to go back down to the Planning Commission. If they're acquiescing to it, and just saying we would be fine with that change, but it's ultimately the same modification, I don't take this as the applicant saying they don't want the same consideration by the board, they're just saying they would acquiesce to it. But if it has changed by the applicant, then yes, it needs to go back to the Planning Commission.
I don't see how it's not, haven't changed, I mean, it's not the same thing that was before them. And I'm not understanding how it got to us without that being clear.
Well, and...
I'm talking to the county attorney and to Stephanie, the planning manager. How did it get to, on the agenda, to us, and it's not clear?
Commissioners, I think the way procedurally is that the Planning Commission voted against approval based on the application that was before them. In the time since then, I think, and I don't want to speak for the applicant or their representatives, but what I get the feeling is that in the time since then, to make it more palatable, they would consent to some changes if that was what the board wanted to see. Or if the board wanted to vote in favor of what they originally had, I think they'd also likewise be okay with that. So, they, I think essentially saying to make it more palatable to the board, to address some of the concerns by the IPC, they'd be willing to do that. As opposed to, they're asking for a definitive change, they don't want you to consider the old application, but they're just trying to make it more agreeable to the board of Commissioners. You know, if there is any ambiguity in that, then perhaps it should be remanded back down as far as who's making that request, how it got here. In a general sense, the board of Commissioners, you know, if we remove the letter of request or letter of acquiescence, the board can make modifications to zoning applications or to zoning requests. You can put conditions on it, and that's not uncommon. So, if the board wanted to say, well, this is our compromise to that, in a vacuum, you can do that ordinarily. I think what may complicate this, or may make it some, give it some ambiguity is whether or not the applicant has done it. So, if the board thinks it's cleaner to remand it back down, and with the changes, I think that's appropriate, if that's what you want to do.
I guess my concern is that it... My concern is that it's clearly a change, because it's not the same information that IPC looked at. And I understand what the applicant was trying to do, but if it's clearly a change, we should not have seen this, we should have automatically gone back. If that's what you're telling me, is the procedure...
It is a change from the original submission. Well, if you were to approve this, that is a change to the original submission. It is a modification to the original submission, correct? Okay.
And, you know, based on what we're hearing here, I'm going to have to recommend that we remand it back to the Island Planning Commission. But in so saying that, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that a project gets submitted in January, and we're considering it in October. The timetable that we're using to process this is just ludicrous and extremely costly to people who try to bring things before Glen County. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, if the timing is appropriate, I would make a recommendation to remand this application back to the Island Planning Commission.
Second. Okay, that is appropriate, and we do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion, Commissioners? All right, there'll be no discussion, I'll call the motion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. I want to thank everyone for the discussion tonight. Mr. Vice Chair.
Let me get my computer caught up here. Mr. Chairman, move that we approve Consent Agenda, General Business, and Finance unless there's any item that a Commissioner would like to remove for discussion, and I would like to move pull item 14.
Okay, got a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all items, Consent Agenda, General Business, Consent Agenda, Finance Committee, with the exception of item 14 that we're going to pull for further discussion. Got a motion, got a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, unanimous. Item 14, that is a, let me get here. Item 14, the original is approved, the issuance of a purchase order through Georgia State Contract to Akins Ford Dodge Jeep Chrysler of Winder, Georgia, in an amount of $111,292 for the purchase of four Dodge Charger Pursuit vehicles with funding to be provided by the Fiscal Year '21 Police Fund. Tamara?
Good evening. The change that we have is an administrative change in the cost. The original amount that was on the agenda is $111,292, and that was the quote for the V6 engines. And so, the, this, my understanding is this was an administrative error, and they wanted to get the V8 engines, which actually reduced the price to $101,420. So, this is a reduction in the amount, which changed the motion that was on the agenda, so that's why we needed to bring that out.
So, we went from V6 to V8 and saved money? How does that happen?
We don't know, but that was the confusion that caused this whole thing, because they were originally trying to go with the cheaper ones, so they said V6s, and then the V8s ended up being cheaper, so.
Once more, great work, Tamara.
Thank you.
Do they make a V12?
I don't know, but we can try for a V20, maybe it'll be cheaper.
Well, this was brought to my attention by a citizen who was reading through the information, and I think the thing we take away from this, and I missed it in finance, is to ask the questions. And I hope that as we learn going forward, people are looking at the work that the staff is putting out, so we need to make sure that it's double-checked.
And I will say that staff did catch this prior to the citizens, and it did not make it through our office to Dewanee, so we apologize for that.
Yeah, that was a good catch. Thank you very much. Commissioners, we have an item here to make a decision on, so if we can get a motion or not?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the issuance of purchase order through GA State Contract to Akins Ford Dodge Jeep Chrysler of Winder, Georgia, in the amount of $101,420 for the purchase of four Dodge Charger Pursuit vehicles with the funding to be provided by the FY21 Police Fund.
Second. Have motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the motion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Tamara. General Business, item 38, Consider Deobligating $146,200 from SPOSS 5 Coast Guard Beach Parking Improvements, Authorizing the Allocation of $146,200 from SPOSS 5 District 2 Recreation to Fund the Kings Park Pickleball Court Construction Project, Awarding the Bid for Construction of Four New Pickleball Courts to the Lowest Response to Bid of McGrath Industries Doing Business as Talbot Tennis in Amount of $142,574, and Holding the Remaining Balance of $3,626 as Needed for Construction Contingency for This Project. Lisa Tergengas, you got the floor.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, this item was brought forward to the Finance Committee in September, and it was decided by the Finance Committee to make the presentation here tonight to the full board. So, Dewanee's helping me with the slideshow, and I appreciate that. So, just some quick background, because I think we're all pretty familiar with this, with the project, is back in May of 2020, we received three bids for the construction of four new pickleball courts at Kings Park, the lowest bid being from McGrath Industries Doing Business as Talbot Tennis. In June of 2020, this item was brought forward to the board for consideration, there was a lot of discussion at that meeting about funding, there was a lot of uncertainty at that time about the impact of COVID-19 on the county's budget, and a motion to award the bid using FY21 capital funds was, it failed for a lack of a majority vote. After that meeting, because the discussion at the June meeting was, you know, the funding source and the uncertainty, so the Purchasing Department contacted the vendor and asked if they would hold their bid for an additional 60 days, you know, but they actually came back and said that they would hold their bid till the end of the year if the county wanted to, you know, have the time to potentially pursue other funding options for the project. So, flash forward. So, in the meantime, separate from this, there was a review going on of SPOSS 5 projects and the budgets available there, and so it was discovered that identified funds in the SPOSS 5 District 2 Recreation Funds. Now, SPOSS 5 is, as you all know, was approved by the county voters back in 2005, and those funds that were allocated for District 2 Recreation Projects went to a variety of recreation projects on St. Simon's, including the South Harrington Park Development, some items at Demery Park, Mallory Park, Neptune Park, there were a variety of projects that were funded through SPOSS 5 District 2 Recreation Funds. Sorry. In 2016, the Board of Commissioners actually authorized some SPOSS 5 Drainage Funds and District 2 Recreation Funds to be used for a Coast Guard Drainage Ditch and Beach Parking Improvement Project. Some other folks that were with the county at that time know a little more about this than I do, but to the best of my understanding and knowledge, that the, in 2018, the Board of Commissioners approved moving forward with the Drainage Ditch portion of that project, but not the paving portion of that project. And again, it's my understanding that the paving portion was put on hold, I believe was at the request of possibly the Historical Society as they were beginning to work towards a Coast Guard Park Master Plan. So, the paving portion of that project was never designed or bid or awarded, and so that does leave that balance that's still there, because since 2018, those funds have not been reallocated for another Recreation District 2 Project. So, there is a balance of $146,200 in that SPOSS 5 District 2 Recreation Fund balance. And it's my understanding that the board could designate these funds for another project in Recreation Project in District 2 if they so chose to do so. So, this has just been a source, a funding source that's been identified as a possibility to be utilized for the pickleball court project if the board so decided to move forward with that project. And again, at the Finance Committee, the motion to deobligate those funds and award the contract approved with two, zero, and one, and then the alternatives for you tonight is to authorize the allocation of those funds, or to choose not to authorize the allocation of those funds, or even suggest alternatives. And then, possible motions for your consideration tonight are on the screen, so. And I'm here to answer any questions as I can, and we also, in case you want to see it, we also have the site plan for the project in case you wanted to revisit that.
Lisa, thank you very much. Commissioners, y'all have any questions for Lisa?
I've got some comments. Number one, I think we need to consider what these funds were originally marked for, even though you didn't put them as, you know, designated funding, but, you know, when you get right down to it, we still have a unpaved parking lot, and ladies and gentlemen, I've heard this pickleball thing go back and forth here for a long time, and quite frankly, I mean, it fell out of the sky, and we've been talking about this, improving the parking and the parking lot there for a while. You know, whether it's moved forward, whether it's dormant, whatever the situation may be, you can't help but prioritize these two things here, and in my mind, taking money that was originally, I guess you'd say, tagged as going in for improvements to what you're talking about there, I mean, good grief, that's major parking, major beach access, and spending it on pickleball courts that, I'd like to remind everybody, that we've had a petition with over 2,000 signatures over there, asking us not to do this. Now, I mean, are we up here to make a decision as to, you know, what's the best for everybody? Are we up here to make a decision as to what's best for pickleball players? Now, it was my understanding, many times that we've discussed this pickleball issue, that we were just going to put it off until the next year and let this thing get figured in, some funding somewhere, not try to dig back from a SPOSS 5 and put these pickleball courts in anyway. And the last time I spoke about this, I made it... And and the last time I spoke about this, I made it pretty clear that I was not against the pickleball courts. I was I was just saying that I think that we need to be a little more patient about this project and and let it let it kind of fall in place instead of trying to cram it in place. And I just can't help but think that that's that's exactly what's happening here. Now, you know, back when the Splosh Five, well, these these monies were collected and you put that in there as a improvement, improvements to the different parks and recreation. Pickleball had never even been heard of. And quite frankly, I've just heard of it this year. So anyway, the the it just doesn't seem like that the reasoning behind this of trying to to make this happen right now. I don't I don't see the urgency in it. If if it was up to me, and I'm I'm sure the the people that live on around East Beach and down in that area had a had a choice, the paving of that parking lot, the the setting off of the parking places. And in my opinion, you know, it's all desperately needed there. It's been there been been this need there for years. And I just can't see taking this funding. I mean, it's, you know, what what are we gonna do here? We're gonna spend that money on pickleball courts for a handful of pickleball players versus putting down improvements to one of the major parking areas and beach accesses on Saint Simons. That's, you know, that's kind of my point here. And and we spend this money on pickleball courts. Then we got to start all over again in in, excuse me, trying to, you know, get this this amount of money back together and to improve the parking lot. So I I just I don't see I just don't see the the purpose of this thing just keep getting crammed and crammed and crammed to the point where you just totally throw in the parking lot and parking lot improvements out the window for pickleball courts. That's and once again, I'm not against the pickleball courts. I just think, I mean, I think this is a perfect example of first come, first served. So, you know, that's that's my thoughts on it, Jim.
If I may, Commissioner Coleman and Board, Paul Andrews was involved in some of that, what happened back in two thousand and sixteen and with the drainage project and the parking improvements. And perhaps he might could clarify some of that project much better than I could if that if you if you're interested.
Happy to try to. If there are any questions specific to where that money was going to be applied to on the Coast Guard Station.
Paul, I think the question for me is, you know, the use of the the funds in two thousand and sixteen, as we saw on the presentation, they were designated for the drainage ditch and and paving there. I have to ask the question, why wasn't the paving done if the board at that time? I think it was, if I got my numbers, I mean, two thousand and eighteen. I I'm a little confused why the paving was never done. If it was in two thousand and sixteen, it was voted on to take the funds that were left over from Splosh Five to apply to the Coast Guard Parking Area, which needs a lot of help. Why was it never done?
The 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 project was authorized to to move forward and by the board. And then the question of the master plan came forward and and the and the effort to master plan that park. And we decided to hold off on on actually going out to bid and and constructing that pending the outcome of that master plan and see if that was. I believe the intention at the time was we didn't want to go ahead, do work only to have it unusable.
I mean, aren't the funds encumbered then? I mean, there was no there was no move by any any board since then to to unencumber those funds. Those funds were designated for parking improvements. Is that correct?
That's correct. We had two funding sources. The the park improvement funding source and a and a drainage improvement funding source. The master plan was completed and at the request of the Historic Society to to, I guess, coincide with their grand opening of the of their museum, is they requested that we move forward with just the drainage to to pipe that ditch that is on two sides of that property. And that that was the request that came forward that I brought to the board at the time was at the request of the Historic Society to have that ditch piped by the time of their grand opening. So we moved that forward, that portion of the project forward. We actually authorized also phasing that project into a drainage and paving, two phases. So we did essentially, the board at the time authorized Phase One of that project, the the drainage portion, and still held Phase Two, the the paving of First Street and installing ninety-degree parking on both First and. Is it all of?
So there was a Phase Two of plan. So this money has been allocated. There is a plan to it. It just hasn't been just general paving. You have a plan for the paving in that area. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. And and that was on the at the board's item that where we where they approved the phasing and the approval of of Phase One.
Paul, I'm not sure. I I sat on that master plan committee for a couple of years and worked with it. I'm not sure that's exactly correct. Money was taken to culvert the ditch around the Coast Guard Museum. And I'll remind Commissioner Coleman that neither did the Coast Guard Museum exist in anyone's mind in two thousand and five. And at that point, the greater, once the ditching had been culverted, there was no longer an interest in laying down asphalt. There was a grand master plan, which may be on the order of three to five million dollars that redoes all of the parking, all of the the beach parking that has no no use for the asphalt paving. And if the asphalt paving was done, it would have been taken out. So it, you know, that that's where that went. It went into limbo. It was no longer required, designated, or requested. So I don't know the funds funds were ever encumbered, as you as you stated. But again, you know, question has been raised. Well, how the heck can can Splosh Five money be used for a Parks and Recreation Project in two thousand and twenty? I I raise the same point. How could it be used to culvert some drainage ditches by the Coast Guard Museum in two thousand and sixteen? Seems to me that when the Splosh Five, and I've had the chance to read the Splosh Five designation, which was more than one point three million dollars to go to Parks and Recreation District Two, that that building a facility to be used for the general recreation of of residents in not only District Two, but all of Glen County makes sense more than laying down asphalt. It's going to be torn up if and when the Coast Guard Master Plan project moves forward.
When the Coast Guard Plan comes about. I mean, we all know it's an expensive plan, and right now there's no funding for it. So I that's to me a pivotal question. If we know that the master plan is not coming about anytime soon, why would we not use the money that had been designated for paving to do paving and improvements in the parking lot? According to Mr. Andrews, the project there included funds from Drainage Splosh Five and Recreation Splosh Splosh Five. So I'm not sure what the the dollar values were for the drainage portion, but I'm assuming they fell within the the drainage portion of Splosh Five monies that you had for the whole the whole plan you were working on at that time.
Gentlemen, I'd like to throw in something right here, too. This was not a hundred percent cut and dried asphalt. We there was many discussions about what kind of material we're going to put down there. And of course, I think it went from asphalt to some sort of a pervious material for for drainage reasons. And as you all know, and the folks that have have visited that parking lot there on many occasions, you know, it's it's it definitely has its drainage problems. And and all the water runs north into this ditch they're talking about there. And and there's been all kinds of of information gathered about the which way this water runs and the the white runoff from the rock, the lime rock that's there now, going all the way down under the streets and into the creek that the little bridge crosses there at the intersection of East Beach Causeway and East Beach itself, the the street going into the parking lot. So we're not necessarily cut and dried on on asphalt here. They were more they were a lot heavier on making sure we had some sort of a pervious material that we put in there. We even I even remember us looking up this new material that had come out. And to look at it, it looked like asphalt. But it it was demonstrated as showing a literally a fire truck type hose there, shooting water on this stuff. And I mean, it looks like asphalt, but it goes through it just just momentarily. So the the water, the water issue there, the drainage issue, I think was probably the most important for that area. And and, you know, the Historic Society was, in my mind, was gonna take this thing over and go with it. And it just hadn't happened. And and I think I think the county needs to stick to their guns and and keep the keep this money where it's supposed to go and apply it like it's supposed to be. And let's uh, let's let the let the folks down the road worry about the pickleball courts. I just can't see taking money from, you know, that far back and applying it to something that didn't even exist back then. So, you know, asphalt is not a cut and dried deal as far as that that parking lot goes. There's other material that certainly fit the need there.
Well, I can certainly understand that this commission can vote to move the funds. I don't dispute that. I question whether or not it's the right thing to move the funds. And we can debate about what's the best, whether it's asphalt or not. I do, I would say this, if this commission does vote to move the funds, I would like to, before we get too far down the road, discuss alternatives for where this placement of the courts could be. So I I don't I don't think we need to go back and and continue to debate whether or not this this commission has the ability to change the funding where that money goes. But I do want to have a discussion at some point about can we look at an alternative besides Kings Park?
You know, COVID has been a kind of an interesting thing. There was a considerable amount of money and time, energy, and resources spent on a master plan for the Coast Guard Station. It was an elaborate plan. It dealt with drainage. It dealt with paving. It dealt with all those issues, Commissioner Coleman, that you're talking about. It was not just laying asphalt down all over the place. It was a comprehensive plan. It was a public, Peter, please help me if I get off base here, but it was a public-private partnership. And that thing just sort of, like a lot of things, sort of ground to a halt there when COVID hit. And and but that master plan is for real. And it is a it is a magnificent plan that's gonna, if it comes to fruition, is going to be a great asset for for that Coast Guard Station as as far as lifeguard safety and all those kinds of things that we've that we've talked about so much. It just doesn't make sense to me to go pave something and then grind it up because we hadn't paved the right place or the right kind of material or whatever. So I I think it would just be very short sighted to go in and just because we've got some money to pave something, go pave it. And then, you know, that'd be contrary to an elaborate plan that's been put in place that that I think is going to be a a great asset for the community. And and Commissioner O'Quinn, I mean, I'm I'm up for whatever you want to talk about as far as the where the pickleball courts go. But but I think it's a it's a reasonable use of the money.
Well, I appreciate those comments, but but I think we're conflating repaving or re-engineering the entire Coast Guard Beach Parking Lot versus what was was being done with this money, one hundred and forty thousand dollars, which wouldn't be even begin to do anything to the Coast Guard Beach Parking Lot. This was to cover the area that was culverted with asphalt. And those that that are now in charge of the Coast Guard Museum do not want that to have happened. And to address Commissioner Quinn's question about looking at some other site, if 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 we do that, we are ending the discussion, ending any prospect of getting these courts built with this bid over this money. And they may, that may entirely be what you wish to have happen. But let me remind everybody, we go back almost a year with these pickleball court situation. And when when it first came to my attention and I got involved with the people playing it, it became an issue between not only the pickleball players. It also became an issue for the many tennis players we have. They were sharing courts. The courts had lines on them. Our tennis players wanted to be involved in sanctioned U S Tennis Association events. The U S T A events could not be held on tennis courts with pickleball lines that didn't have enough courts that didn't have the lines to move forward. And and so let me address a couple of the other issues that we're facing, one of which is that about nine months ago, when this this came before us, we voted as a commission to put money into the Capital Projects Fund to do this. And that's what we were voting on back in May or whenever you said it was, Lisa June. It was felt because of COVID, the economic downturn, and the unemployment and economic uncertainty. We should not do that. Circumstances have changed. It came to my attention to the county staff that this large sum of money that had been designated in two thousand and five for Parks and Recreation in District Two without stipulation of any specific projects at all was available to be used. And I thought that was a good idea. But at the same time, let me remind you what our economic situation is since that time. This is fresh from Tamara this afternoon. Our Rainy Day Fund is is fully funded at thirty million dollars. We we just voted to move money into the Undesignated Fund Balance, which previously had been fifteen million, is now upwards of eighteen million dollars. So we do have the economic resources to even go to the the Capital Projects Fund where designated money exists. But it seems prudent to close out the Splass Splosh Five Project with the monies available that were designated, as I've said repeatedly, for Parks and Recreation. So so that's kind of where we are. If we if we change the location, we change the bid, we end the project. And that may be what what you wish to do, and if so, so be it. You know, I think that a couple of other comments I'd like to make about the two thousand signatures that were raised earlier by Ms. Herman. She showed a picture that was on that website and used to raise to to gain some of those signatures. At that time, the legend that she did not show said, "The people who want to build these pickleball courts want to cut down nineteen live oak trees." I don't think there's like nineteen live oak trees in all of King Park. But if we were going to cut down nineteen live oak trees, I think I would have signed the petition. But in terms of signing the petition, it's also been reported to me that others have actually gone to that site just to see what is what they're saying and what's being done. And they received a response, "Thank you for signing our petition," when they hadn't signed the petition. It's been told by me that there is a Saint Simons Pickleball Web Page that has over twenty-five hundred supporters. So you can believe which other other social media site you want to believe. But the fact of the matter is that Camden County, just south of us, I believe, opened up six brand-new pickleball courts in their parks. Tybee Island has, Savannah has, Jacksonville, Fernaneden Beach. And to to address the issue of 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 King Park, the site and the noise, they're already playing pickleball there. They aren't going to go away. If you all decline to approve this project, the people tomorrow morning will be there playing pickleball at the same site virtually by twenty feet. Same people, same noise, same situation. It seems to be a nice centralized location for the people that enjoy this. It seems to be a nice centralized location for the people that enjoy this sport. And, and really what we're looking at is, is to try to create some sort of balance between the tennis group and the pickleball group. So they have their own, uh, singly designated, uh, site to play. And a final point on the noise, as I walk around through these parks and these areas every day with my dog and my wife, I gotta tell you, pickleball, yeah, there are some pops here and there. But if we're looking to ban noise from St. Simon's Island, I think we need to start with the landscapers. And I'm being facetious to you landscapers. But if you've ever heard the edgers, the weed whackers, or now the leaf blowers that have taken their, their volume up hundreds of decibels, they are far worse than six or eight or 10 middle-aged people playing pickleball, uh, in the middle of, uh, the, the morning a couple of days a week. So I am hopeful that I'll be able to get at least four votes, uh, to move forward with this project with Splass Five monies and close out that project. So thank you for listening to me.
Um, I think, Mr. Chairman, we made a commitment, um, some time ago, as Commissioner Murphy mentioned, to do this project. And, um, we delayed it for good reasons. And to find this money that's available, unless an Aaron is saying it's illegal for us to do it, then I don't, I don't see why we, we don't do it and, and keep our commitment, um, on this particular project.
Uh, Dr. Murphy, it sounds like you got, gonna have three votes anyway. I move to de-obligate $146,200 from Splass Five Coast Guard Beach Parking Improvement to authorize the allocation of $146,200 from Splass Five District Two Recreation to fund the Kings Park Pickleball Construction Project, award the bid for construction of four new pickleball courts to the lowest responsive bidder, McGrath Industries. DBA tabbed tennis in the amount of $142,574 and hold the remaining balance of three, $3,626 as needed for construction contingency for this project.
Second.
Uh, Commissioners, we have a motion and second on the floor, on the table. And, um, any further discussion? If being none, Commissioners, I call the vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is four, four. Those opposed? There's two opposed. Any abstention? One abstaining. It's four, two, and one. Uh, motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Uh, item 39, consider adoption of an amendment to Section 2-3-7 of the Liquor, Malt Beverage and Wine Ordinance of Glen County to permit the sale of alcoholic beverages by the package of consumption for the, uh, for off the premises on Sundays for an additional hour and a half during the time between period of 11:00 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. and for other purposes. Uh, Aaron, you wanna give us some background on it?
Certainly, Commissioners, um, I'd be glad to. Earlier this year, in 2020, the General Assembly passed a, a law, um, that allows, uh, Susan Counties to, um, start selling, well, allow merchants and vendors start selling, uh, beer, wine, and distilled spirits at 11 o'clock, um, versus the 12:30, which it is now. Um, if you recall back on Sundays, uh, so this is a Sunday sales change. Uh, if you recall back in 2011, uh, state law changed drastically when, uh, packaged sales were allowed at all. And this is a carryover from that. So instead of 12:30, which is what is allowed now, um, which is on the county's ordinances, if you were to want to allow it to begin at 11 o'clock, uh, an ordinance amendment is necessary. And, um, that's what you have before you. Just by way of background, we were asked, um, by, um, one of the local convenience stores to, for the board to consider that this change, which is why it's before use tonight.
So basically, we're saying the package stores can open up at 11 and sell packaged alcohol beverages on Sunday?
As currently, correct. As currently proposed and written, that is, uh, that is correct. And it would allow beer, wine, and distilled spirits to be sold. However, I do think if there were a, um, the board wanted to do beer and wine, I don't think you have to allow all of them, uh, as it's written. You could do beer and wine, I'm sorry, beer, wine, and distilled spirit. You could do beer and wine only, um, if that was the commission's pleasure.
I'm just saying, I, I can't, I'm not gonna support it, so.
Listen, Lord's got enough problems for me. I don't need him to have anymore. I'm not gonna support it either.
Commissioners, excuse me, Commissioners, uh, any discussion on this? If anybody wanna-
Yeah, but maybe, maybe I took a break mentally. Uh, if, if, if we, if we do, do nothing, are the package stores allowed to be open at 11 o'clock now? Or do we have to make a, a affirmative vote to allow them to open at 11?
You have to take a vote to allow them to open 11. Currently, they're only allowed to open at 12:30 p.m.
Okay. Because when you mentioned, uh, Mr. Parker, uh, I did have a couple of discussions with him. And, and my initial impression was that the package stores had been given allowance to open at 11. And he was hoping that we would give equal opportunity to the convenience stores. But, but if, but what you're saying is, we have to make an affirmative, affirmative vote on, on one or the other or both to make 11 o'clock the time. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think what, uh, Mr. Parker was referring to is that in 2018, um, state law changed and there was a county referendum, county-wide referendum for what's called a Sunday brunch.
Right.
Which is what, uh, and that moved it back from 12:30 to 11 o'clock. So I think he was referring to, because the Sunday brunch, uh, allows restaurants and hotels to open or to start selling at 11 o'clock, to be, um, comparable to them, uh, state law was also changed to allow packaged sales to begin at 11. So I think that's the, um, comparison he was making as far as trying to, um, for his business anyway, and I don't wanna speak for him, but to stay competitive, um, to open up at the same time on, on, at 11 o'clock on Sundays.
Answer my question.
Commissioners, uh, is there not any, any, uh, discussion? Uh, we'll entertain a motion if someone wants to. If not, we won't get a motion. Looks like. Okay. Uh, looks like the clock's gonna run out on that item. Um, that item's gonna fail for lack of a motion. Item 40, consider an amendment to the Glen County Code of Ordinance to prohibit the consumption and/or possession of alcohol on the beaches of St. Simon's Island on November 6, 2020, and November 7, 2020. Aaron, you wanna-
Certainly, Commissioners.
I think we know, but-
Certainly, Commissioners, uh, this would be an ordinance amendment, um, to, um, your ordinances that would prohibit the, um, consumption or presence of alcohol or, um, on November 6th and 7th, um, of this year. Um, it would be, it would sunset on December 31st of this year. Um, and that's, that's the same weekend as, uh, the Georgia, Florida. Um, so if there are any questions as to, uh, the application, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Aaron, thank you. Commissioners, any discussion?
Yeah, maybe I could, uh, start since this is primarily a District Two issue. Um, I think what we have here is a public health and a public relations challenge, um, that's been unprecedented. And, and just to set the table, um, I've been a, uh, enthusiastic and, uh, persistent reader of the Brunswick News. And they had a rather provocative editorial yesterday that said, that called upon us, cause we're the ones that, uh, proposed this, "Put together a plan, not a ban for Frat Beach." Couple of, uh, the phrases in there. They suggested that we were suggesting to the college students, "Their patronage is no longer welcome," that we were prohibiting college students from gathering on Frat Beach, that we needed to work with the students, and we shouldn't jump to conclusions and automatically presume the students will cast safety and caution to the wind. That's one I love. It's an old fogey's way of thinking. So I know there are a couple of old fogey's out here, but, uh, I, I thought I was still a little bit younger for that, but maybe not. Maybe I am. But, uh, we needed to instruct the students to minimize clumping and let them police themselves. Uh, couple of things about that. If, the, the news, first off, we, we have been really blessed down here in Glen County because our curve has flattened. The number of patients in the hospital is way down. Uh, the acuity of the patients in the hospital is down. And our daily numbers are way, way, way down. But in spite of that, the governor recently extended his emergency order. And we were told the other day it, it lasts until, uh, November 9th. And in that order, it stipulated that the cities and counties need to, uh, preclude gatherings of more than, uh, 50, uh, people, particularly if social distancing of greater than six feet cannot be enforced. And again, the newspaper, I think it was, uh, yesterday, had a picture of last year's Frat Beach. And I missed last year, uh, unfortunately, but was at the, uh, two prior ones helping to pick up trash. And I can tell you, they're not six inches apart from each other, much less six feet. And I don't think that's gonna change. Um, unfortunately, students do misbehave and don't self-regulate. And, uh, all you have to do is look at the sorority and fraternity issues across the country. Uh, unauthorized parties where, where a large number of students come back infected with the virus. And I just read the other day that, uh, colleges and universities in North Carolina have, uh, shut down, uh, in-person attendance in classes because of the rising, rising number of COVIDs. Uh, and, and I was listening to the Scott Rife and Radio Show the other day, and, uh, or I guess it was this morning, and, uh, heard actually some business owners even suggest it's a lousy, uh, weekend for business. Uh, so not all business owners are necessarily, uh, in favor of, uh, us encouraging the, the kids to come down here. Uh, and I've heard other, uh, owners personally tell me that it's not worth the hassles and the risk for them. So, so what I'd like to remind everybody is we're not shutting down the beach. I don't think we have the authority to that. What we're asking is, or proposing, is that a two-day alcohol ban be imposed to discourage a dense congregation and decrease our risk from creating a, uh, super-spreader event. Um, this is an unprecedented pandemic. Um, I, I, during my medical career, I saw the SARS and, uh, H1N1 and, and the panic that that, uh, induced amongst the medical community. But this is unlike anything we've seen in our lifetime. And as we are doing well, uh, with, with what people in our county are doing, I see no reason, uh, to create a circumstance, uh, or to, uh, even suggest we're supporting a circumstance or fostering a circumstance, uh, by once again turning blind eye to underage drinking on our beach. But rather to, uh, ban the, uh, drinking on the beach, I think is a, a healthy start. And hopefully, uh, I'll be proven wrong about the behavior of any visiting college students.
Commissioner, I've had a pretty vocal stand on this thing. And, um, it's Frat Beach. And I just, um, I, it's, uh, it's not the image that our community needs. I think one of the things, and I'm gonna ask Alan to talk a little bit about our plan this year and what we're gonna do. But I think one of the things we need to realize this year, like, uh, not like, unlike other years, um, most of these students don't have tickets to the ballgame. They never have. They came down here, but they got on buses or they somehow or another were transported to Jacksonville to tailgate parties. Had a big screen TV and, and, uh, went down there and partied and came back. That's not gonna be the case this year, cause there's gonna be no tailgate party in Jacksonville. And there're no, not gonna be any big screen TVs. So these students are more than likely, if they come, and I suspect they will, are gonna be with us, uh, through most of the weekend. So I think the challenge, um, this year is, is how we gonna, how we gonna, uh, provide a safe environment, not only for these students and, huh, they're going back to their various universities, including the College of Coastal Georgia and Glen Academy and Brunswick High and Georgia Southern, and not, uh, becoming a super-spreader event and shutting our, these schools down. Um, so Alan, why don't you share with us some of the ideas that we're talking about this year and what, what we're planning to do, uh, to try to, to do the best we can. And that's all we're gonna be able to do is the best we can. We're not gonna be able to, uh, we're not gonna be able to administer this thing and, uh, and to, uh, shut down drinking on the beach. I don't think anybody's naive enough to think we can. But go ahead and tell us what you're talking about.
Sure. Uh, Commissioner Brunson, um, thank you. And, and Dr. Murphy, uh, from, from my standpoint is correct, uh, that the, uh, the goal to ban alcohol for those two days is to dissuade, um, those who would, you know, perhaps not come if alcohol wasn't allowed. And it's certainly about the pandemic, uh, from, from my perspective. Um, and every year, uh, we do have a plan. Uh, some have suggested that why don't you just get together and develop a plan? Well, we do that every year. In fact, uh, over 200, uh, and that's an estimate on my part, it could, it could be closer to 300. I don't think it's less than 200, county, uh, and state, um, employees man the event. That doesn't include, uh, the Keep Golden Isles beautiful volunteers that are, uh, at the event, uh, who, by the way, have said this year that they will not, uh, pick up trash during the time that the students are on the beach. They will be available once the beach clears to come in and, uh, pick up the trash, but not during the event. I cannot in good faith authorize county staff to be out in the crowd, um, during the event like we have in years past. Now certainly, if students, um, have a medical issue, you know, we will have to go in and get them. Um, but, but we, you know, we do have a plan. We're, we're gonna be meeting virtually Monday with our, um, county staff as well as our state partners to talk about this year's plan and response. And that response, um, like I said earlier, will not include during the event, uh, picking up trash. Uh, so, you know, we will have to figure that out. We wanna, uh, use, uh, more, uh, aerial surveillance through cameras and drones to, you know, check on the crowd and, and the event. Um, and, and so we'll be developing that, that plan on Monday. But, you know, we're very concerned about the spread of the virus. We, we've all probably read about other events, um, nationally. Uh, in fact, the events on the beach early on in the pandemic, where college students gathered and, uh, there was an outbreak. We have been very blessed and our numbers have gone down. And we want them to stay down. And, uh, my, our main concern is the health and well-being of the people that are participating in the event. And that continues to be our concern. It always has been. Now, the hospital will continue to be involved, but they will need a bigger footprint because they will have to have more spacing to, um, to, you know, treat the students that, that need the medical attention. So, uh, you know, we'll, we'll be developing a plan. Like, uh, students will, will be there, um, on Monday. And then we'll have, have additional meetings too. But, uh, we will not have staff out in the crowd like we have had, uh, have had before. So it is a concern, but my concern is the pandemic and COVID-19 and how that, that may spread to not only the college students, but to our community as they interact with other places as well as our county employees.
I may have missed this. You, you gonna, you plan on having the porta potties, 90 of them?
Uh, uh, we do plan on having porta potties. Is 90 the number?
Hundred, hundred porta potties?
Yes, sir.
They got about 70% use. That's a pretty good average. Use your imagination for the 30%. Um, they, uh, so, um, so we're, we're gonna gear up just like we have in the past with the, the whole contingency of people. They're just not gonna be on the beach. But we'll be, we'll be there in force, uh, with everybody we got.
Uh, I, so the beach is gonna be closed?
No.
Okay. I misunderstood.
No, we, we will be on the edge of the beach. We will just not be in the crowd.
Okay.
Unless there's a medical emergency. Unless there's a medical emergency.
I'd just like to add that I have been enlightened this week, and my thoughts have emerged a great deal through the week as I've learned more about Frat Beach. It's been a long time since I was in college, and I never participated in a Frat Beach weekend on St. Simon's Island, so I was, I guess, a bit in a cocoon as to just how things transpire over there. But with that being said, and I support this now, will we have police on the beach and, you know, how are we going to attempt to enforce this ordinance? I mean, I know it's an impossible task, but what efforts, I guess, I'd like to know for informational purposes, what efforts we'll be making, I think that follows up what Commissioner Brunson was saying.
Chief, you want to come up?
Yes, sir. Good evening, commissioners. As Mr. Ayers referred to, will we be meeting Monday to go ahead and start our planning? Of course, public safety is our number one concern, we want to make sure that everybody's safe, and that's both the fire department as well as Georgia State Patrol, DNR, and the sheriff's office, we'll all be working together. Some initial thoughts we've thought about is trying to use bullhorns to give directions to the students that are on the beach. Also, all of our officers will be wearing PPE, personal protective equipment such as masks and gloves. We want to make sure the kids don't get hurt, that's the most important thing. But of course, I have the concern that if I were to have a number of our officers that end up infected, it could affect our ability to do our job. We only have a finite number of police officers, and if five or six were infected during this, it could affect the operation of the police department, and I think Chief Jordan would probably agree with that for the fire department, because we are there to try and help the students and make sure that they don't hurt themselves or get hurt. There's always the potential for a fight to break out or something like that, and we'll have to take action, and we certainly will do that. But right now, we will be there, Mr. Ayers and I have talked about it, and I think we need to plan as if it's going to happen and be ready to deal with it when it does. I hope that answers the question.
It does, and thank you. But it follows then, how much checking are we going to be doing for open containers and just public display of drinking, and again, informational purposes here?
Yes, sir, and I want to have an opportunity to speak with the county attorney. Of course, typically, I think most of us know that the way they transport alcohol to the beach is they use gallon milk jugs that they have emptied out, and they add alcohol to some type of Gatorade or juice or something. So there is a Fourth Amendment issue, search and seizure, as far as walking up to a person and saying, "I need to know what's inside that jug." So that is something we need to explore a little bit further. I don't have a concrete answer on it for you tonight. Certainly if we see somebody, and both fortunately and unfortunately, I've dealt with this event for the past several years, been involved in the planning and execution of, and I think we've been very lucky here in Glen County that we have not seen a lot of injuries or a lot of people hurt. It's fantastic to have the hospital and the fire department there to take care of the students that do have issues. One of the problems that we run into is, of course, you can look at a person typically and judge whether or not they may be underage, and that does give you probable cause to approach that person and ask for identification. They're on the beach in bathing suits typically, they don't have identification with them. So we have to, that engagement becomes much longer than just checking an ID and being able to move on. We have to run it through our NCIC, GCIC computers, it will really tie up the officers. But of course, based on your direction, we will enforce whatever we need to enforce.
That's my concern. I just don't, I know we put it, we're put in a difficult situation. My concern is the safety of our first responders in this, and I know that's everybody's concern. I just don't see how this is going to work to keep our folks safe. The students come, they choose to come, and their concept of being safe is different. I saw one student that was supposed to be quarantined, and he had 20 people in the house just going, and so he thought just being in the house meant that was quarantining himself. And then they feel like it doesn't affect them many, don't realize that it is impacting them, but, you know, we have folk that have other issues, and like you said, when they leave, if we have a number of officers, you know, that have been infected, then we're left with dealing with that. So I don't, I just don't see how we're going to be able to do this and keep our people safe, and still, I know if there's an emergency, we have to deal with that, but if, I mean, if you can share more, you or Alan, what the plan is, and I know it's difficult, especially when you tell young people not to do something, they're going to do it. And so I just don't know how this is going to work for us.
Yes, sir. And Commissioner, you bring up a very valid point, if a fight does break out, then police officers are going to have to get more than six feet, they're not going to be able to stay six feet away from that situation. We're going to, we're going to stop the, stop the fight and make sure that nobody gets hurt. Of course, that gives the opportunity for the PPE to be ripped off and things like that. It's really a, and I know you all know this, it's really a no-win situation. We will try to do our best to contain the perimeter and make sure that people are safe as we begin our planning process on Monday. A lot of these questions, I hope to be able to come back, or Mr. Ayers will be able to come back and answer for you. My initial thoughts are, having dealt with it in the past, is that we plan for it like we have in the past, but anything that we can add to it that will be preventative as far as the pandemic itself, we'll add those precautions in also.
Well, my suggestion would not be to have food trucks out there, I mean, you're just increasing exposure there. I mean, it's, I would hope that we would eliminate that aspect of it.
Yes, sir.
And everything else we've got going on that enables this thing, and we, that's what we are, we're enablers.
Last year, we felt that that was a good addition because there was not a pandemic, and we felt that them having some food on their stomach may help, and it worked out very well last year, but I certainly understand that this year that would be, it would give the opportunity for people to gather together in a very small area to get food. So we are, we're wrestling with it the same that you are, and we just want to try and provide the best public safety service for both our citizens as well as visitors as we can.
And following up on what Mr. Smith said earlier, can we develop as part of the plan, notification to the schools that we have passed this ordinance and let them inform, yeah, as part of the, as part of our game plan?
I think there's already communication that goes on, Catherine Downs has been, has been working with the schools quite a bit.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Neal, this is Catherine Downs, Assistant County Manager. I have had contact with the University of Georgia already in preliminary discussions, and they're ready to push out whatever message y'all would like to send the students. And also, we'll continue to work with the Red and Black, which we've worked with in the past, which is the University of Georgia's college newspaper.
Catherine, aren't we going to inform the governor's office of what we are planning to do down here?
We, I have, I'm working on a letter that would do that, and just kind of waiting for your decision tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I, that's something, commissioners, that we feel like, since we can't shut the beach down, you know, we can do everything else that we can possibly do, and that's what we're talking about here tonight, but as far as shutting the beach down, there's only one person could do that, and we want to, we had already talked, some of us about informing the universities about what we're doing, hopefully they get the word out to the students. And, you know, by the way, since we have a COVID pandemic and the governor's concerned about that, and we're going to have a big crowd here, we thought it'd be only proper to notify him what we have going on down here and what our plans are and the limitations of our plans. Okay?
Is it possible to get the athletes involved in encouraging the students to be safe?
That is definitely something that I can ask the university, but right now, that has not been an ask, but I can, I can push that message to.
At least the ones that are from here, I mean, I know McClennan is on there, and ask them to make an appeal, you know, on behalf of their hometown or something, that may be a little bit more powerful than just a general letter.
We can certainly look into that.
All right, thanks. I've got one question as far as ban, alcohol ban, what would be the consequences? I mean, you made a good example a while ago, so I go down there with a jug full of juice, you don't know if it's got any stuff in it or not, but then on the other hand, you know, if you, if you do, I mean, are we going to confiscate, pour it out on the ground, are we going to arrest them and take them off to jail? What's, what's the consequence?
That will be part of our planning process as we move forward, and that's a great question, it's an answer that we need to have, because if there is an arrest involved, of course, then we're involving the sheriff's office and the jail and transport and tying up those resources. It is, it is a violation that we could write a citation for, we could use officer discretion and pour it out, we have a wide variety of options to deal with something like that, and of course, we will work with the officers and ask them to use their discretion, but we do have some options. But if we, if we start making arrests for every person that has violated that, it will very quickly overwhelm our resources.
You know, at the end of the day, I think that we need, the statement needs to be made that we did every damn thing we could do. And this Commissioner Browning said, you know, this, things like this could make the New York Times. I mean, it could be a PR nightmare, and I'm not saying that, I'm saying the safety of everybody is paramount, but again, we could be on the headlines of every paper in the country. And I think this commission owes it to everybody to do every single thing we can, and so, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we accept this ordinance to ban alcohol on the beach, and we do the very best we can to manage what could potentially be just a nightmare.
Okay, Commissioner. Commissioner, we have a motion to ban alcohol on November 6th and November 7th on the beach. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Be no discussion. I'll call the motion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, commissioners. We do have one item we need to go into executive session for to discuss a request by the Public Works Director. If I can get a motion.
For property acquisition, commissioners?
Huh?
Property acquisition.
Okay.
Make a motion, we're going to executive session for property acquisition.
I have motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, we're going to executive session.